Are the pledge of allegiance?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Ford.
Present.
Councilmember Tremont.
Here.
Councilmember Stiltner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. Four of us in attendance, in person, one of us virtually, all five of us are present. We have a quorum. At this point in time, we've got two proclamations to read. I'm going to read the first one for Breast Cancer Awareness Month because I don't believe we have any representatives here for that. And then the next one I will read because we will do a presentation for that. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas in 2020, an estimated 276,480 new cases of invasive breast cancer expected to be diagnosed in women in the U.S. along with 48,530 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer. And whereas even though the chances are less in men, about 2,620 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men in 2020. And even in, whereas every woman has a risk of breast cancer, even if she has no family history of the disease. But women over the age of 50 are at the greatest risk for being diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas a mammogram is the single most effective method of detecting changes long before physical symptoms that may be cancer, that may be cancer, can be seen or felt. And whereas three and a half million breast cancer survivors in the United States today. Wow, that's an incredible number. Our testament to courage as well as the importance of continuing education and funding for breast cancer research. Now therefore, I, Donald Burnett, Mayor of the City of Port Orange, Florida, do hereby recognize the month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Port Orange. And the City of Port Orange encourages women to consult with their healthcare providers about regular screenings and to promote early detection of breast cancer and encourages all to wear pink ribbons in support of those who have fought and are still fighting the battle with breast cancer. And with a signature and a seal of the city, it is so declared for the month of October. Now, I have a presentation, so I'm going to do this on the floor. If the two of you will join me down there. Counsel, I'll ask you to maintain your seats only because we got to maintain social distancing in the process. Let's steal this for the moment. For Domestic Violence Awareness Month, this is something that does not get a lot of publicity and it should because it carries some of the very same dangers. Therefore, whereas as we mark the 26th anniversary of Violence Against Women Act, we note that we have made significant progress in changing laws and attitudes, providing support to survivors and reducing the incidence of domestic violence. And during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we acknowledge the process, the progress made and recognize that more work remains to be done. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men in the United States have been the victim of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates members of our community's privacy, security, and humanity in the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And whereas the Beacon Center does an outstanding job providing comprehensive services to families affected by domestic violence in Port Orange. And whereas we pay tribute to the compassion and dedication of the Beacon Center's volunteers and professionals and applaud their efforts to increase public awareness on the causes, interventions, and prevention of this devastating crime. Now therefore, I, Donald Burnett, Mayor of the City of Port Orange, Florida, do hereby proclaim this day and the month of October 20 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Port Orange and urge all residents to become aware of this epidemic and support the Beacon Sector in its mission to end domestic violence in our community. With my signature and the seal of the city, it is so declared on this day and in this place.
This is one of the things, I don't know whether to applaud or not. I applaud your efforts and that's what we're applauding. Because this is absolutely worthy of all of our attention. And Savannah, I appreciate you're making sure that we do this with all the gusto and the energy and the fervor that I know that you put into this. I tell you what, it is my honor to present you this proclamation. And as long as I'm mayor, that's going to happen every October. So as far as I'm concerned, it's something that we need to worry about 12 months of the year. Whether there's anything that we can do to help at any time, you say the word. And this is the part where we give hugs, handshakes, high fives, and can't.
Can we just get a picture?
We can do the picture. But unfortunately, this is the day and age we live in. Phil, only you would know.
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
With this, I need public comments on the consent agenda items. Would anyone here can speak about any of the consent agenda items? There being none, I would like a motion for approval for the agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was, I couldn't tell whether that was a grunt or not, but the ayes have it, Chase. Approval of minutes, I'm sorry, remainder of the consent agenda, items eight through 11 may have a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items eight through 11.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve consent agenda items. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont. Councilmember Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. And Robin, do me a favor. Even the items that don't require a roll call vote, make me do a roll call vote so I make sure that we get Chase on record appropriately.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor?
Chase.
Just to clarify, I was a yes, only consent, in case there was confusion.
Gotcha, thank you. And I was, but that's okay. Item 12, special reports from Kemper Sports Cypress Head Golf Course.
Oh, that was quick.
Oh, there he is.
Lucky you.
Yeah. Bring this down a little bit. Bob Duquette, Cypress Head Golf Course, general manager. The report for tonight is actually for August of 2020. Our revenues for the month of August actually finished a little bit lower than our projected budget. Most of this is due to the direct results of multiple days of rain, rain and more rain causing over about eight days of cart path restrictions. T-boxes in our greens were also airified this, this past August. And that requires a top dressing of sand, which also limits the playability. So a lot of the players don't like to play on cart paths and/or on top dress greens. But overall, we had a, we achieved 95% of the current budget and we actually were increased 20% over our previous year. Our payroll for the month was lower and even this with the extra staffing that's required right now to maintain all the CDC guidelines for the clubhouse and actually for outside services as well. And our entire team's been working diligently to maintain our continuity for the guests. The month of August is our 11th month in a fiscal year. Year-to-date, right now, the revenues are actually higher than projected and our retail sales are also higher as projected. Operating expenses are slightly lower and we do have some expenses for fertilizer, herbicides, and fungicides, which unfortunately is a byproduct of all the extra rain. So this grass is a nice living, breathing thing. The COVID pandemic has continued to cause multiple cancellations, rescheduling of all of our tournament groups. However, we're beginning to see a lot of interest in bookings for 2021 season. We just recently had our first, in September, our first tournament event since March. It was for the Port Orange South Daytona Rotary as well as for the Spruce Creek Football Boosters. We took a limited amount of players, it wasn't a full field. We kept the six-foot social distancing as well as all the sanitization process that we do for the golf course and for the golf carts. So we're starting to see some changes, smaller groups though. In the month of August, we had 3,109 rounds, broken down by 2588 paid. 283 are annual rounds and our 238, which are the other rounds. Our superintendent Darren Baki continues to follow the agronomic program. And like I said before, the expenses for the month were just a little bit higher, mostly for post-emergent weed control and also for the fungicides and herbicides. Due to an increase in sale in the pro shop, we've actually had process now of starting to reorder supplies and merchandise. The only drawback with that with pandemic is they've slowed down all the productions. So it's difficult to actually get golf balls and other items for the pro shop at this point. There are about a two-month delay for shipping out items, but we will be fully stocked here before the holidays. The men's group, ladies' groups, and all of our other groups have continued to play for August, of course, also following all the guidelines that we've established for social distancing. Summary report, we have two forms, we use a Google platform as well as our True Service Kemper Sports platform. For the overall rating for the course was 9.1, course rating of 8.4 and our service is at 9.6. And we are recommended by Google by 91.9%, which is pretty good on the Google platform. Due to the pandemic, we continue to follow our guidelines established by the CDC. And we're also relying on Kemper Sports as well as the communication between Sue Lavallo and her team here at the City of Port Orange. We follow any instructions that they might have to help us out. A couple of things I'd like to do, first off, that's kind of a bit of the report. I'd like to invite all the council members, actually any, any city players, anybody from the city to come to, citizens that come to Cypress Head, come and check out what we have. Right now, we're extremely proud of the product that we do have and the benefit that we are providing for the city and for all the citizens of Port Orange. We were just recently awarded the best of the best golf course in all of Volusia and Flagler County. And that's even with challenges, including a private golf course in New Smyrna Beach as well as a 36-hole facility in Daytona Beach. So we beat them out for best of the best for the golf course. And again, as I mentioned, we've got a 91% Google rating, 9.1 rating on True Service. And all of this is done because of the team that we have at Cypress Head in order to make sure that we're proud of our product and presenting all of our players and happy to have them all visit and see what we can provide for the city. Also like to thank Sue Lavallo, Kevin Swett, and their team from the city. They've been extremely beneficial in helping us. Their communications, giving us any guidelines if there's any complaints or concerns. It's been wonderful working with them. So thank you so much. And if anybody's got any suggestions how to stop the rain, I'm in.
Well, I was going to ask you what you thought September might look like, but I think you just gave that hint.
September's been a little bit of a rough, I just looked at some preliminary numbers today. And actually, we will hit the revenue projection, so that's really great. For the most part, the expenses are a little bit lower, again, they're not final, so I don't know. We've had a challenging month of October, I will tell you. September, we kind of worked it through, but right now, October is not starting good.
Calm down, it's all right.
I understand, but we got to stop this rain.
Bob, you're going to get with the Chamber of Commerce on that and see if they can pull up some chamber, dial up some Chamber of Commerce weather for you.
Well, in actuality, the Rotary event turned out extremely well because it was perfect. And I think they all finished before it started to rain, so it was good.
Good, good.
It was a good day.
Bob, just a quick comment for you that I think you'll appreciate. In the last week, I have encountered two folks who made it a point to let me know that they had previously stopped, these are avid, avid golfers, kind of stopped playing Cypress Head for a while. And they played, I don't think it was in the Rotary, I think it was the weekend before.
Spruce Creek Football.
And both of them said, almost like they had had the same conversation, the best condition they had ever seen the course in.
Thank you, it's made some great strides.
Yeah, very noticeable, so great job and pass that on to the grounds crew, please. Because specifically, they were talking about a lot of the areas that they had in the past, they just didn't care for, that they hadn't really seen a remarkable improvement. So whatever's going on out there from the maintenance aspect, and I know the rain is going to be a big challenge for September, but.
It has been challenging.
Hopefully they'll be able to stay on top of it and the rain will stop and the rest of the, because I know we're coming into the season, right? I mean, October through March is usually pretty good.
Yeah, it's, it's probably the healthiest in terms of the course conditions right now. The hardest part is actually getting mowers out into the areas that we actually need to cut. So the rough's a little higher, you do want to stay out of the rough.
Hmm, okay.
Well, I for one took exception with the condition of the golf course because the greens were not very friendly to my putts, so.
And I know you said that it's going to be challenging ordering equipment, golf balls and things like that. Don't tell a lot of people, but there's quite a few in some of those ponds that are stored there. And so if you guys need to access those, go ahead.
The only problem now is you need a guy with a scuba suit because they're deep, those ponds are, they're, they're deep.
Yeah.
No, I've noticed that when I send balls into the water at Cypress Head, there ain't no question they're going to the center. There's no recovery.
Yeah, I have two questions.
Sure.
You know, you've seen a real increase in players, I guess, do you in any way track the new players? If you will, who may be new? And do you think that they've enjoyed it so much, they're going to come back and continue at that same level?
Yes, so anybody who does register as a new person, if they come in, we try to take their name at that point when they register so that we know they're on the golf course. So we take their information, phone numbers, zip code, email. We always send an email out to them to ask them, how, how did your day go? Was there any cause or concerns or anything else? So we get a pretty good feedback on our True Service reviews from that. But we try to track everybody typically, if they're coming in, if they're playing and they've not been in our system, we make sure we get all their information.
And then my second question is, in both July and August, when you talk about the rounds and the annual, which I assume relates to the passes.
Correct.
You're like, you know, your budget, 454 in August, 486 in July, you didn't even hit either of those marks. You were like under, you were 280. So I guess my question is, are you getting the new people to the detriment of pass holders? And isn't there value in hitting the mark with pass holders? Because that's revenue you can count on, I guess I'm saying, as opposed to, you know, who's going to show up at the golf cart?
Right, two, two things actually from that point, when we set our budget up in the, in the beginning of the year, we tried to evaluate as to how many we get, we think we will have for annual passes. The pass numbers actually, numbers went down. So where we may have budgeted thought 450 to 500 rounds in the course of a month, we lost some of those annual members. So now all of a sudden, they're not playing because those rounds just aren't there anymore. Because we lost maybe eight to 10 of those players, be either through death or moving or whatever the case may be. So the numbers are slightly skewed because we budgeted for more, like next, next year we're budgeting for less because we've lost again some more people.
But, well, I guess, don't you, I guess I would ask the question, you've got a big housing development coming online.
Right.
And it would seem to me that you could recruit some annual pass members. And the value is, that's money you can count on.
Absolutely, yes. We, we, like, it gives us upfront money so we can do our expenditures and expenses and everything else from that point. We've actually had conversations with a couple of the developers about trying to do something as to if they buy a home, giving them some sort of a deal that they could come over and say, listen, you can become a member, Cypress Pass, member over at Cypress Head. It is, I would like to see more members join. We've actually had, October 1st started our, this fiscal year. We've actually had a few more of our Cypress Pass that have renewed and added on from that point of view too. Now, the other numbers that are go down, the change is unfortunately, most of those pass holders are older and they will not play if there are cart path restrictions. So at that point, they're saying, nope, I'm going to wait another day. Because for them, it doesn't, it's not as important. But we do need to get those other new people that are around, just Waters Edge, you know, Meadow, not Meadow, Woodhaven, all those areas and stuff to, to come and say, let, please be a member, absolutely.
And then just out of curiosity, you've talked about the, you know, the stuff you do on the greens so you have to stay on the cart path as a function of rain. But it also strikes me that perhaps your agronomist might have a hand in that. And that's one reason your greens are getting better tended to. And so maybe there may be more days that, because he's got a different formula or different thing going on that's working.
He is, he's definitely has been a benefit for all of us. His knowledge, understanding, he's a U of Florida grad for agronomy. And so what he's been able to do has been a great benefit. The unfortunate part is that we're on such low land that that rain has no place to go. So at this point, it's basically a wet field out to the edges in the, again, the rough areas. Fairways and greens, T-boxes are in tremendous shape. You just want to stay away from the outside roughs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chase, you with us?
Yes, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Bob, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Bob.
Citizen participation, non-agenda, Phil, I've got yours, but I'm going to, that's on the agenda later. I'll let you speak to it at that point, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, with that.
Robert.
Robert has one, okay.
Yes, Mayor, council members, Robert Ryan Hagan, 1425, Dexter Drive, Port Orange. With regard to the city manager's leave absence, I find a considerable disconnect between a, to recommend an acting city manager and an assistant manager's position description that provides that the assistant manager will be the acting manager when the manager is unavailable. I can understand the city manager appointing an acting manager in a situation where the assistant city manager is in some sort of probationary period. But otherwise, the city is paying a lot of money to assure that we have an assistant manager available, ready, and prepared to step into the city manager's position on short notice. So if the city is comfortable with the city manager selecting an acting city manager from the staff, then I believe the city should be looking at eliminating the assistant city manager position. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Do you have any others, Robin?
I have a good.
Okay. Council comments, why don't we start with Chase since you're out there in whatever land it is, cyberland, I guess we could call it.
No real comments, other than just for full transparency purposes, while I'm virtual. My, my son was exposed to COVID at school on Friday. We were given a call on Monday to have him get picked up. So he's home for two weeks and at an abundance of caution, I went and got a test yesterday and I'm just waiting those results. I feel fine, I don't anticipate anything. But just again, out of the abundance of caution, I decided to come in virtual tonight.
As long as we have that option, that's good, Chase, and I appreciate that, my friend. There are some things as friends we should not share, and this is one of them.
You got that right.
Sorry, Jamie, I'm missing your first go-around up there.
That's quite all right.
Marilyn?
No comments.
Drew?
I don't have anything tonight.
Scott?
Well, good, I've got a few things.
Good. They saved you some time.
Well, first of all, we have a few people here in the audience from the Port Orange South Daytona Chamber Leadership Class. And I would like to recognize all of you, and usually at this point, if it was not COVID, I'd make you all stand up together. usually at this point, if it was not COVID, I'd make you all stand up together and come introduce yourselves, but in lieu of that, I would like somebody who can speak for the entire group to come up. Who would that be? Hmm, could it be somebody I'm staring down right now?
I guess she's beautiful.
Come on up, Deb. That can speak to what they're doing here tonight. I could have picked on Melanie, too, but you were closer.
I'm Deb Donatino, and I'm a graduating member of the 2015 Leadership Class, and I've been asked to be this year's liaison for the Leadership Class. So as you can tell, we have a nice number of people in attendance tonight that are taking part in our leadership program this year. And we've been lucky enough to be invited here tonight so they can see what a council meeting is all about.
Okay.
Well, Brian Peak from the City of South Daytona, Adrian Barker from Promo Products Guru Powered by Halo Branded Solutions, Arona Mando Lasecki, Michael Moody from ViStar, Los Minif from Mobile Homes For You, Thomas Knight Mutual of Omaha Mortgage, Julie Austin of Adams Cameron and Realtors, Phil Madsen of Anytime Fitness, Kristen Lalencade, golly, I hope I said her name right, because she's from the City of Port Orange, Tom Diulo, I hope I got your last name right, too, Junos Reed, Kevin Sweat and Amanda Sargent, all of the City of Port Orange, Tracy Grubbs from Spruce Creek Scuba, who I met a couple of weeks ago when Billy Wheeler and I went to visit her at her business, and Courtney Ruleback from Advent Health, who sends us email updates from time to time. All of you, if, everybody here, if you're in leadership, go ahead and stand up, and I want to applaud all of you for taking the time to become involved and learn more about how our community works, and that, not just from the city standpoint, but the entire community, and appreciate the time that you're putting into leadership and the things that I've seen from every chamber leadership group from the Port Orange South Daytona Chamber. Each class is a little bit different, a little bit unique, has its own take on things, it takes on its own personality, but all of them have been a very positive experience for all involved, and I just want to say now is the time to applaud all of you. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay. Jamie and I talked before council meeting, and I just want to let you all know, I do have concerns that we are pursuing, and I know that we put a lot of things in place to make trunk or treat work, including making people register in advance, trying to control the crowd size and the like. My concerns stem from the fact that you have a lot of people that know it's an event every year, and if they hear that we're going to do it, they're going to show up without registering, receive the ad, not read that you need to register in advance. So if everybody who has any say at all in communicating, please visit our social media sites, helps get the word out. We would very much like to do the event the way it is planned, in a very controlled environment so the kids can enjoy it. I know that I have very much enjoyed the last couple of years, having a couple thousand kids come to city center all at once, and it's not going to be that this year, and albeit disappointing, let's do our very best to get the word out so that we have a controlled event that is worthy of the City of Port Orange and do it right for the kids. The one thing I wanted to mention, too, is the census. This is the last month for the census to, to register. Port Orange, we've had 73.5% of our residents self-respond, so that means 26.5% of our residents have not responded to the census. There may be somebody knocking on your door, there might not be, there are time limitations, there are COVID limitations, so it's a whole lot easier to go online to 2020census.gov and register your household and everybody in it so that we get a true and accurate count for the City of Port Orange for the census. Usually we run third or fourth out of the 16 cities in response rate, we're slightly ahead of, in response rate of where we were 10 years ago, but because you can register online, I would expect that we, we should be. That was not an option before. You can, that, this is the first census where you can register and be counted by registering online, and that was planned before we knew COVID was coming, so that actually was serendipity, I guess, in a way. So let's get the word out that 2020census.gov, and let's get the other quarter of the city that hasn't registered for the census, registered, and that'll help somebody from having to knock on your door during COVID and you having to worry about that, so just wanted to repeat that. With that, the public hearing portion of our meeting is now open. Second reading of ordinance number 2020-31, the Land Development Code, Chapters 2 and 16, atypical fences and special setbacks. Ordinance number 2020-31 is an ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending the Land Development Code, Chapters 2 and 16, updating the definition for atypical lots and types of fencing allowed on an atypical lot, and providing a definition and special setbacks for pergola and gazebo. Hey, I said pergola right. Providing for repeal conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number 2020-31, amendments to Chapter 2 and 16 of the Land Development Code.
Second. We have a motion, proper second, the item is opening on the floor for discussion. Council questions or comments?
No, this is second reading.
I did have one question. The pergola, where it says it can only extend three feet into the yard, is there like, am I misunderstanding that because?
Into the front Penelope Cruz planning, so I wanted to come up, I know it's second reading, normally don't get up on second reading, but I did want to say we did amend the ordinance per what was voted on at the first meeting to make the changes to remove the AC provisions, and that, so it's three feet into the front yard setback, so if you have a 25-foot front yard setback, it can go three feet into that. You can still, if your building isn't, if your home isn't built right up to the 25-foot line, you might have more space, but they can actually go into the front yard.
Okay, that, that's how I understood it, but then I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chase, did you have any comments or questions?
No, no thanks.
Would anyone here care to speak to the item? There being none, council final comments or questions? There being none, call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Silmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Five oh. Oh, come on. There it is. Usually the ordinances at the beginning goes towards the end of the packet. Item 15, a second reading of ordinance number 2020-32, amendment to the Land Development Codes, Chapter 16, Section 1, and Code of Ordinances amendments, Section 70-48, 7050, in regards to residential storage. And that ordinance is, an ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending the Land Development Code, Chapter 16, Sections 1E, 1B relating to outside storage to add a regulation for inoperable, disabled, abandoned, and unregistered licensed, unlicensed recreational vehicles and equipment. Amending the Code of Ordinances, Section 70-48, to add a regulation pertaining to inoperable, disabled, abandoned, and unregistered, unlicensed recreational vehicles and the equipment, and add, and to private, golly, I should have worn my glasses, and to add private motor coaches to the definition of recreational vehicles. Amending the Code of Ordinances to Section 70-50 by deleting obsolete provisions and providing for general enforcement, providing for repeal conflicting ordinances, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
That was a handful, Mayor.
Tell me about it.
Move to approve ordinance number 2020-32, amending Chapter 16, Section 1 of the Land Development Code, and Section 7048 and 7050 of the Code of Ordinances.
Second. We have a motion, proper second, the item is opening on the floor for discussion. Council comments or questions?
No, it's my second reading.
Chase, did you have any?
I do not.
Would anyone here care to speak to the item? There being none, back to us, questions or comments, council? There being none, call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Silmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, five oh. Brings us to first reading of ordinance number 2020-30, the rezoning of 4116 Nova Road. Ordinance number 2020-30 is an ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, rezoning property consisting of approximately 9.6 acres from floodplain conservation F-C80, commercial industrial, CI, authorizing revision of the official zoning atlas and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number 2020-30, rezoning approximately plus or minus 9.68 acres from floodplain conservation, FC, to commercial industrial, CI.
We have a motion. We have a motion, and now we have a proper second. The item is opening on the.
I don't think I'm allowed to.
Penny showed up with her greatness and R, and, and got you. We have a motion, proper second, the item is opening on the floor for discussion, and we have a presenter.
Yes, sir, Penelope Cruz planning. So the subject property says located at 4116 Nova Road, it's right behind the Go-Kart City, adjacent to the FEC railroad tracks and south of Nova Road. The overall parcel is a little over 13 acres. The rezoning that's before you tonight is only for 9.68 acres of the property. The applicant's requesting to rezone those 9.68 acres from floodplain conservation to commercial industrial, consistent with the current future land use designation on that portion of the property. The property has been developed as the Summit Gulf Driving Range since approximately 1994, '95. It's been consistently mowed and fertilized and maintained as a driving range, so it's not really your traditional conservation land that we typically are, are think of, like wetlands and things like that. The driveway access on this property is also not part of this rezoning, it has a different zoning on it, but it's a shared access with Go-Kart City. So this is the future land use map on the property, you can see where the majority of it's got that warehouse industrial land use, but the edges along the west and the south side of the property has got conservation future land use. That's basically where the wetlands are located on the property. They started out years back when this was developed, developed as man-made constructed wetlands to handle the stormwater, and over time were naturalized, and the DEP in St. John's has accepted it as a natural wetland at this point. When this land use was adopted, those, that stayed conservation, so that's not part of this rezoning area. You can see here, the current zoning on the left, on the right, the proposed zoning, you can see the driveway is zoned, planned commercial development, that's because it's a shared driveway with the Go-Kart City and it's addressed in their PCD, but it is part of this parcel, that's not changing. Just that 9.68 acres that you see in gray over to the right, again, you can see to the west and the south where the floodplain conservation zoning is remaining, consistent with how the conservation future land use is currently, to keep those wetlands preserved as is. Let's see. And also just to add, from those wetlands, the standard city requirements for 25-foot wetland buffer is also required, so if this were to be approved, any potential future development of this property would not be allowed to incorporate that area outside of the rezoning area, so the area that would be staying floodplain conservation would not be able to be part of any development plan that would come before you. Staff is recommending approval, and I believe the applicant is with us also via Zoom and may want to speak to their application.
I want to hear from the applicant. Dana, you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us about the, the application you've made.
Yes, thank you. My name is Dana Crosby Collier. I am here for the applicant, ABC Nova Industries. We also have the ABC Nova Justin's on the line as well, if you have any questions with him. We are in complete agreement with staff's recommendation, and we are available to answer any questions if you have any questions about the property.
Okay. Well, we start this end, Scott.
Dana, do you have any idea what, how the property would be marketed with this kind of a change?
So the, the property was recently under contract, and the buyer intended to build an RV-type storage facility, and that, that contract is no longer valid, valid anymore, but we are planning to market it to do a light manufacturing warehouse or distribution-type related use.
Anything else, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Drew?
I think if I remember, this has come up in the past before for rezoning, it was denied because of the, you know, sensitive wetlands around there, and I know there was a lot of cleanup work done.
No, this, this property's never been up for a rezoning, there was some land use changes historically, but.
Okay, yeah, there was, I kind of remember, something came up and.
Yeah, they did the, the land use change a couple times, but the zoning, this is the first time.
Yeah, we were worried about protecting it and, and making sure because of the, the wetlands and the, and the way that goes, so I'm just not sure about going to commercial industrial on this one, in, in that area, so we'll, and they're going to, the RV, I guess, was gone, and so they're going to market it for manufacturing and warehousing. I just don't know if that's a, a great fit for that area.
Yeah, it's the only use that we've at this point had, somebody showed the concept plan was for, and when they say usually manufacturing warehousing, it's, you're like a warehouse, like a, like structure storage, it's not, we don't really get like true industrial uses in Port Orange.
Got you. We still have a lot of industrial space available that currently exists, so it'd be hard to develop that.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
You good?
Yeah.
For now. Marilyn?
No questions.
Chase, are you with us?
Yes, I don't have any questions for the applicant. I might have some questions later on for, for staff.
Okay. And I certainly, Drew hit upon it, I am a little concerned about the impact that this would have on that particular area myself, I don't have any questions, but it's, it's an environmental impact, and that is a low-lying area, I think it would be very difficult to develop. I'm glad to see that there's four acres around it that, that are going to be reserved because you're going to need that, and I think abutting the railroad track, that an engineer is going to have a lot of trouble designing on that lot anyway to make sure it drains properly, but that's not for me to decide.
Would anyone here care to speak to the item? There being none, back to council. Dana, do you have any other comments that you wanted to add, anything you wanted to add before it comes back to us?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to add a comment or two. I just wanted to mention that this zoning classification is consistent with the underlying land use for the property, so the commercial industrial is actually the zoning designation for this, that this property should have in order to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And also, we have it explored, I think staff mentioned this as well, and have a little trouble hearing, but we have explored the development of the property with, with city staff for the past six months or so, and we're very aware that development, any development that comes in on this site will have to comply with the city's codes and also all the environmental regulations that is, are associated with this property. And there are setbacks that are increased because of the wetlands around the area, and also there will be significant storage capacity for your stormwater and whatnot on the site, so the site will be developed in a way that will best preserve your environmental features on the site.
And Dana, don't get me wrong, but I think that because of that, that the footprint, that eight acres of the 13, you're not going to be able to fill eight acres of building on that property.
That's correct. The application to rezone is, is a little over nine acres, but you're absolutely correct. The footprint for the, for the actual site development will be much smaller based on the needs of the, the requirements, I should say, of the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Council, final comments or questions? Scott?
I don't have any for Dana.
Drew?
No.
Marilyn, anything else? Chase, did you have anything else?
None for the applicant.
Okay, well, this is it. No other comments? Council, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I, I just, my concerns are very similar to yours and Drew's, and, and you know, the, I just, I'm really kind of surprised that a former mayor's not here tonight talking about this, because, you know, the Rose Bay project is something that we spent a tremendous amount of money, time, energy trying to restore some of the issues and the harm to the Rose Bay area, which also feeds somewhat into the Spruce Creek area. I'm hesitant to support this, probably because it's, this is one of those deals where I wish you could hedge your bets and know exactly what would end up there, and, and so we can measure what those impacts may or may not be more closely, but I'm really familiar with this particular area and how those impacts and how close in proximity these things are to those, those estuaries in Rose Bay and how this can affect Spruce Creek, and you know, Rose Bay has come. And, you know, Rose Bay has come a long way from the renovations and the projects they've done there and improving water flow and it's a very noticeable difference and I just, I hate the idea of anything upstream, which you're, you know, if you zoom out, you're not talking a very far distance at all. You're talking about something really close here and I'm just really hesitant to see anything that could be that close, that could environmentally set us back decades if not farther, you know, irreparable harm to that area. It's so vital. That's all I got is my thoughts about it.
Drew, anything else to add?
No, I couldn't have said that better myself. That was, that was good.
Chase, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, that was a pretty hard no on this right from the get-go when I first read it and I had a lengthy discussion with community development today. They kind of softened me up a little bit, but I don't know if it was enough to get me across the goal line. I, you know, I'm as pro-growth and development as they come. I don't mind getting into situations where we're rezoning commercial to industrial, to residential and mixed use, things of that nature, but I'm not so, I'm not really into rezoning from conservation. I think we have land that's, we've designated to conserve for environmental purposes. Those are, I'm a tougher sell on that, so I don't think I can support this at this juncture. I understand that it's consistent with future land use codes, but frankly, I just think that maybe some previous council may have gotten this one wrong, so I'm not willing to continue down that road.
Okay. Marilyn, you get the last word.
I don't have a problem with that. I think if you're concerned about what light manufacturing or commerce would go there, that you address that through an ordinance that talks about accepted industry and not accepted. This is an area that we want to try and develop and quite frankly, you got a railroad going through it and by, nearby it, which one of those cars could, you know, go off the railroad and dump anything. So I just think, in my mind, the glass is half-full. It's not half-empty and I think there's a way to regulate, to rezone this and then accomplish the purpose that everybody is concerned about through a different mechanism.
Mayor Burnett? If I may, I think, you know, I'd like to bring Penny back up if we could. We need to really discuss the flu designation that the city has in place since 2012 and what that kind of does for us as we consider this here today. Also, there is some history with the property. We've had some challenges previously, so I just want to give Penny maybe another opportunity so that we can touch on that.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Again, if you can see on the screen before you, it shows an aerial from 1995. This property is not your traditional conservation land. It really should have been rezoned and changed when they approved the special exception for the Gulf Driving Range back in 1994. It in no way meets the requirements of floodplain conservation or conservation land use and it's, like I said, continued to been mowed, pesticides, things, you know, maintenance of the golf course. It's not prime conservation land at all. At the back end, here at the south, that's a stormwater pond that's maintained as well as a stormwater pond and the wetlands that are there now were actually dug as stormwater ponds and have over time developed that way but are being preserved as conservation. There would also be a 25-foot buffer from that. There are also requirements in the land development code when it comes to any kind of potential industrial uses. Like I said, mostly in Port Orange and all we've ever gotten calls about for this property are, for industrial is really inside buildings, doing more, or if it's outside, it's more storage or very light kind of, and this is the lighter category of the two, commercial industrial. We really don't have traditional, what you would think of industrial uses. There are safeguards in place, not only in our land development code, but also through the Department of Environmental Protection, St. John's and other state agencies when it comes to, when somebody would come forward with this were to be approved with a site plan and making sure that, you know, those checks and balances are in place, the proper easements are in place, the proper stormwater system are in place to make sure that there's filtration and any, and once that water leaves the site, that it's properly filtered and cleaned.
And actually, in a better way than it actually functions now.
Definitely better than what's going on right now because right now you've just, you've got all those pesticides from the Gulf Driving Range just going through and so if this were to get redeveloped, the treatment of any kind of stormwater would be much better than what it would be to our current standards. If by chance there was some sort of use that created some kind of concern, you can see the list of uses were in the staff report. There are provisions for that as well as far as inspections from DEP. We have some other properties in the city where there was some concern about potential drainage even after it went through the filtration. Those properties get inspections from DEP sometimes annually, sometimes on a five-year cycle. So there's checks and balances in place to make sure that this can be developed in a safe manner and most importantly, just to note, consistent with the future land use that the city council approved on this property. And we have kind of the obligation with state law to make sure that we give property owners a zoning that is consistent with their future land use so that they can have reasonable use of their land. entertain any questions you might have.
Well, I can certainly attest to the fact that there are no trees in the middle of that field because if they were, I would have had a golf ball find it. I know that. Comments or questions for Penny? Mayor, if...
Question, the attorney.
Go ahead, Chase.
Mr. Jones, do we put ourselves in a legal challenge if something was agreed to back in '12 and we don't follow through with that agreement at this time?
Yes.
Potentially. But this is America. Anybody can sue anybody for anything, whether there's reason to or not, but certainly when it comes to having zoning consistent with a future land use amendment that we've already put in place for a property owner, is that what you were telling us?
Yes, and if there are further concerns, Mayor, maybe we, if it's counsel's pleasure, we could possibly table the item to allow us to kind of brief you on some background on some legal issues that have already kind of run their course regarding this property.
Counsel, further questions or comments?
Penny, is this the same...
Oh, go ahead, Scott. I'll come back.
No, go right ahead, Chase.
No, I'm just, you know, when I hear that, it makes me think a little twice and that could be the very thing that could push me over the edge because I always want to prevent us from getting in a situation like Hansel was a couple of years ago. Now, the fact is, the thing that was, was a little reassuring in my conversation with Mr. Berman earlier today was knowing that no wetlands will be disturbed whether now or in the future. So five years, 10 years from now, wetlands develop into undeveloped land that even they will still have to be protected at the time. So I can be altered a little bit if that's what you're telling me, Matt, because I don't want to put the city in a situation where we're not, where we're reneging on a, on something that was, that was promised before. Go ahead, Scott. I'm thinking out loud now.
Thanks, Chase. Go ahead, Scott.
Penny, is this the same situation on how we ended up with concrete manufacturer where there used to be a rental property, a equipment rental business? I wasn't on council when that whole thing happened, but for some reason I...
I'm not sure what you mean by the same situation.
Where there was a land use designation change that allowed for Sparks Concrete to start manufacturing and...
That property had a zoning and land use change. The way we got to this land use on this particular property had some legal issues at one point and so we were in a position where we had to approve this future land use and I think what Matt's getting at is we don't want to go down that same route again.
Yeah, I get that, but again, my concerns would be with those that were similar with folks who we're dealing with.
And to speak to the Sparks one, we did check in with DEP when we heard that they were wanting to look to move to the next step of rezoning this piece and they do, they have done their inspections. Everything's been fine out there. The last inspection, they're on a five-year cycle based on the type of permit they have with DEP. Their last inspection was in 2017. Everything was clear and actually the Sparks site hasn't been in use for about the past six months because they've got contracts with DOT right now and so they're functioning at a different locations, but DEP said that they are in compliance. There's no issues out there.
Would you, could you conceivably end up with that same type of business on this property?
Let me see.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's, that's fine. It is the same zoning. Everything would have to be looked at. Again, this one's a little bit tighter as far as their parameters and their elevations. So this property's got some lower elevations than what that property had over there. So a lot of any potential development of this site is going to have to not only deal with the filtration for the drainage, but it also is gonna have to do compensating storage. So a really big chunk of any potential site plan's just gonna be stormwater on this site.
A third and a half of it, probably.
Yeah. So it's, this is different in that it has different elevations and it's more than likely not going to be feasible to, engineering-wise, to develop something like that. It's really, anything to develop on this site based on the elevations and what our engineers have looked at as well, because we have reviewed some concept plans, is really gonna be using that existing building. It's got existing parking lot out there and maybe just a little bit more. Really, the balance of the site's gonna have to deal with stormwater and treatment. It really cuts down on what can really be put out there.
Anything else? Drew? Anything else?
I'd be okay with tabling this if that's the choice of the council to, you know, if they need more information or we need to be...
I don't need to table it, but I mean, let's see what everybody else thinks. Marilyn? Normally, I don't do this. I don't usually give a second bite at the apple, but because we went to final comments and it spurred other debate, that's Matt Jones' fault. Anyone who cares to speak to the item, I will allow it now. Okay. Counsel, any other comments or questions?
No.
Well, if they're being done, then I'm calling the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stiltner?
No.
Thanks, Mayor Bastian?
No.
Mayor Burnett?
Thanks, guys. Yes, 3-2. That closes the public hearing portion of the meeting. That brings us to regular agenda. Item 17, approval of the YMCA waiver and deferral letter. Recommended motion is to approve the waiver and deferral letter. May I have such said motions so we can get it item up and on the floor for discussion?
Motion to approve YMCA waiver and deferral letter.
Second.
We have a motion, proper second, the item is open on the floor for discussion. It's an Alan Rosen sighting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Alan Rosen, Assistant City Manager. The request that you have before you is a two-month, I guess I'd call it a forbearance of rent for October, November of $37,448.44 to be discussed during the negotiations of what we would do with YMCA during the calendar year 2021 and determine when and how that money would be paid back. If we cannot come to agreement, then that money would be due back to the city on or before, after December 1st of this year.
Counsel, comments, questions? When we start this side this time. Marilyn?
No comments.
Chase, comments or questions?
No comments.
Drew?
Saying they already made the rent payment and they want it back?
No, so they made the rent payment for September.
Okay.
This would be a forbear, they have not made October yet. This would be a forbearance of October and November while we negotiate what we're gonna do for 2021.
Do you know if they have reduced, waived or changed their rent that they're receiving for their clients in our building?
I have not asked that question.
Okay.
You can ask that of them if you want. We'll bring them up in a second, but Scott, comments or questions of staff?
Just one more time to walk through the numbers for me. The total annual rent is to...
The total annual rent as stated in the lease for this year, for calendar year 2020, total is $224,690.67.
And so ideally, conceptually, what we're doing is reducing that total annual to $187, $242? Is that the...
If that's the, yeah, if that's the difference between those two numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes I'm given numbers, but...
I got you. And then, so that revenue loss, how does that impact us?
So, good question. So the way we set up the lease is that there are some years where we will be putting money into a pot because we know in the future we're gonna need to spend that top, keep the building. Right now, we're in the building up of that revenue phase to make sure that we have the money to spend it. I think I asked Susan Lavallo last week about when the next round of expenditures are gonna be needed and it's not for, I think, hopefully, five or six, seven years, something like that. So if YMCA would be given a deferral and if we can set a payment plan that will put us back on track, hopefully by the end of next calendar year, if it's not too long of a timeframe, I hope that we will have enough money in that fund to cover the things that this rent is meant for.
Okay, so then basically the, if council decides to waive October and November, we're really just hurting that fund, so to speak.
That's correct.
Where we would be setting aside monies for future use on the property renovation and things like that.
Robin, did we lose Chase?
We did.
You wanna message him and see if he's logging back on? Very much would like him involved in this debate. Scott, do you have any other questions for staff before we bring up the applicant?
Uh, no.
Okay. Anybody else have questions of staff? Come on up, Chris. I'm kind of stalling because I'd like my...
Yeah, wait.
His person here. Okay. Let him in. There you go.
Good evening.
Hold on just a second. Chase, I want you to confirm that you're back with us and that you can hear.
Yeah, just got back on. Got knocked off.
Yeah, I figured as much. We kind of slowed down and stalled for you. Okay, great. We're gonna, Chase, we're about to hear from the applicant. Chris, go ahead.
Good evening, Chris Selkopp, CEO for the Bushland Private YMCA. To answer your question, Brooks Rehab slash Halpakx Health, who rented a space, have not contacted us. In fact, I sent an email to them about two and a half, three weeks ago asking about their intent for 2021 because their lease expires at the end of this year. So their lease had a one-year extension for 2020. They exercised it and now they expire, so they've not gotten back to me with that or with a request to reduce it for 2020 or the future on out. So I don't know what their intentions are for the future of that space.
So that subject hasn't been broached by either part of you?
Nope.
Or them?
Nope.
Box is ticking there for you.
All right, I know. I realize that, so I'm gonna have to get on them again because last year they were very responsive. So I don't know if the lady, if the young lady I've been in touch with is no longer employed or what's because it's gone dark on me. So I need to track them down and find out what the situation is. Because it wasn't actually Brooks Rehab, it's a third-party company that manages it.
But they're still there utilizing...
Yes.
Like they haven't moved out or anything?
No, they have not.
That would give you any indication.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Chase, did you have any questions for Mr. Selkopp?
No questions for Mr. Selkopp, no.
Okay. With that, I know that I have got at least one person who wants to speak to this, so let's hear from the public and Phil, I'll go ahead and call you first. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I didn't plan on speaking, I just happened to be here with leadership, but it's an item that's of some interest to us. But it's an item that's of some interest to us, so I put together some thoughts. My name is Phil Madsen. I own and operate, along with my wife, Anytime Fitness in Port Orange, 3761 South Nova Road. The first thing I want to say is I'm very clear that the YMCA does a lot more than just the gym, and we appreciate, you know, that. There's a lot of important work that goes on there, and I don't want to take anything away from that at all. I do want to share some insights for your consideration. Six years ago, when we opened our gym, we counted up the competitors in the area, and we figured we had about a dozen. Today, that number's closer to two dozen. Within the next 12 months, there's another major national brand coming to town that's going to have a huge impact in the market. We expect at least one more, just based on what we see in other communities, you know, another couple could come. The fitness industry itself is absolutely dynamic. It's competitively, it's brutal, and if you're not light on your feet, good with your money, and able to quickly adapt, you're screwed. It's just that way. Floor plans change, equipment changes, technology changes. And if I was in your shoes, if I was sitting where you sit, and I was getting ready to vote to give aid to the YMCA, I'd want to know, how will you keep up, you know, in this highly dynamic situation? How are you going to keep up? How are you, how will the people of Port Orange know that you're not throwing good money after bad? And how do you know you won't be asked to do the same thing later, given what's going on now? I sent a text to my wife about this, and she responded, basically saying that, you know, the private-public tension that goes on with anything like this, you know, we're running a business, we're commercial, we pay the taxes, we do all that kind of stuff. Our landlords aren't giving us any relief. Why should the city give the YMCA relief? That's kind of there. There was one comment that she said, "I was talking to two of our members when your text came in, and they said they used to be YMCA members. They were both deeply offended with the idea of giving the Y special treatment that other businesses cannot obtain." You know, "It's tough out there for all of us, and we want you to know. At least that's out there." And the only real point I have, I'm not going to speak for or against the item, but I want to suggest to you that if you go ahead and do this, and again, we understand, there's more to the YMCA than just the gym, but if you're going to do this, it's wise, I think, to be very, very clear about the benefits to the money that you're fixing to spend.
Thanks, Phil.
People want to know.
Appreciate it, Phil. Anyone else care to speak to the item? There being none, back to us. Counsel, comments, questions? Mary, let's start at your end.
Nothing to say.
Drew?
You know, Phil makes a good point, and other, to me, this is a tough one to give back on that, and, you know, not knowing the plan moving forward, or where we're going to be, it just...
I think we'll know more once, I mean, this is the stopgap to the larger agreement that we're still talking about. And I think the one thing that makes this difference is that we're the landlord in this case. We're not, and this is agreements in place. They are the, they lease from us.
Yeah.
This is our facility. They lease from us. So it is a little bit different view in that regard.
Yeah, for sure.
Scott?
Yeah, this has a lot of different angles to it, and I appreciate all of the comments the speaker had. Those are, every single comment and item that he spoke about is something that has already been weighing on my mind since, well, you know, a couple of weeks ago when we knew this was coming to us. And, you know, there's a very long history of the YMCA in our city, and a long history of different types of service that they provide to and throughout the community. Some of those have been somewhat diminished over the years. As the community has grown, there's other alternatives for a lot of those services to be had. Some of the things that I wrestle with, and I'm just putting this out there, because I know that we're going to be having more discussion about this coming in December, but some of the concerns that I'm really starting to have with this really is the cost versus return on this. You know, we significantly, in my opinion, leased that property and that facility well below true market value. So in a sense, it's not truly a typical landlord-tenant type relationship. It's a landlord-tenant with also significant taxpayer supplementation to get the cost down to where they can continue to stay. I've long had a lot of concerns with the business model that the YMCA has had. I know a lot of YMCA's that just have had to be closed down. I know a lot of YMCA's, which I believe ours is one of them, for years, has been used to support financially other wise programs, and to what costs, because now when they really need to reserve, like, you know, let's say this was a typical business that had been, you know, building those reserve funds to anticipate tough times, to get them through, to keep them on track, that's not really there. And I get it, it's their model, so, but those concerns are there. And so moving forward past, you know, the December date, I really think that council is really going to have to take a look at this from a lot of different angles, and it's going to be tough. It's really going to be tough, because they've been great to have in our community, but, you know, in a lot of cities, the YMCA is the Parks and Rec program also for the city. That's not the case for us. We have a vibrant, outstanding Parks and Rec facility program that provides a lot of things that a YMCA will do for a lot of other communities that don't have their own city Parks and Rec facilities. They don't have the private fitness facilities. They don't have the daycare facilities, and so forth and so on. So as we have grown, there is a lot more of those options available in our community, and we are starting to really get into that area of, should we be supplementing them to tilt the fair market competition of a lot of the things that are provided in the community? So something we'll have to see. For right now, I'm willing to try to help, but I have a lot of limits there. So I'm willing to support this tonight, but I'm not real sure about how we're going to go forward after that, to be quite honest with you, just because I got to, I kind of, I feel like we've got to feel good about the business model. We got to know they can stand on their own feet, because they're really a separate organization. They're not the city, you know, so...
Well, and if they don't, there, the main thing for us is we maintain that building. It's our building. We need that revenue.
We do, yeah, well, and that's why...
Longer.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking Alan with that, you know, that I still think it's a fabulous facility. It's a superb location. It's got a lot of upside to it, but it is an older facility now, and then when the times come, those monies are going to have to be there. They need to be there, so that, you know, whether it's for this tenant or another tenant...
We made a significant investment in that pool not too long ago. Nobody has a pool like that in this area.
Exactly, so those are just some talking points and some concerns that I'm going to have moving forward, for sure.
Chase, comments, questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't have a problem with this. I understand all the comments being made, and I agree with a lot of what was said. I don't see this as giving them anything, and I don't, frankly, I don't see it as different as what a lot of people, businesses, and residents have gotten during this time period, is some reprieve of their mortgages and their rents due to deferments. This is not a gift. I'm not giving anything away. This is a simple deferment, putting it on the back end. I'm happy to work with them. We've been partners with them for quite some time. Frankly, I think if you took a poll, the vast majority of residents of Port Orange view the YMCA as an extension of the city itself. I'd be willing to bet that people in Port, a lot of people in Port Orange believe that the YMCA is run by the city of Port Orange, because it has that kind of, has that kind of reputation around town. And I sort of put this on the same par as I put our golf course. Frankly, I see it as an amenity. Now, I know there are significant differences, however, it does meet a lot of needs for the people in the community. I'm not willing to fight the board at this time. At the same time, I agree with Scott. I'd like to send a message. This isn't a long-term deal here. I'd like to see the model changed. I'd like to see it self-sufficient. At the same time, I am willing to work. I'll remind staff, our Parks and Rec, of my counsel, of my comments last time we discussed this, was I hope we're taking a good note as to all the activities that are offered to all eight of these, to YMCA, in the unfortunate event that they are unable to make it at the end of this, and we can pick up a lot of that slack through the Parks and Rec and our new community center. But at this time, you know, this is not a gift. It's a simple deferment, and I'll go with it.
And for me, I want to state, I've got a little bit of all of you in this one, that this is the, this is not the primary agreement. This is a forbearance of a sorts, while we work on what potentially might be a longer-term agreement to help them out and maintain a revenue stream for us in that building. Without that revenue stream, we still have to maintain that building and figure out what to do with it. So there are some short-term, long-term implications, but for me, I am going to support this tonight in regards to making sure that our tenant lease, lessy relationship is maintained while we work out something longer. But at the same time, I think we voiced this last time, and we voiced it again tonight, Chris, that we're looking to make sure that what the plan you bring forward shows a sustainability of this facility. And I don't want to say that I don't care about your other facilities, but I'm not charged with caring about your other facilities. I need to know that we're helping you to sustain this one, and not the other ones. And you, of course, are working on agreements with the other cities and the like, and that's separate from this. And that's why I'm going to support this tonight, but I think the primary debate, we've raised the questions tonight, is going to come when we have the main issue come up shortly with whatever, I think Alan's working on it. See what, see what he comes up with us for debate. And with that, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
No.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, 4-1. Additional items. Item 18, City Attorney.
Nothing further tonight.
Thank you. Item 19, City Manager.
Yes, one quick comment tonight, Mayor.
Wait a second, who are you?
Jamie Miller, Acting City Manager.
Congratulations. Welcome to the dice.
Thank you.
Jamie, would you mind speaking up a little bit, please?
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Wonderful. One quick item for you guys tonight. As I'm sure you recall, that we had a water main break on Spruce Creek Road, which caused some damage to a residence on Spruceview Lane. Our insurance company, due to a number of factors, has accepted that claim. However, we do have some limitations in our coverage, which leaves some items such as temporary housing, and some moving and storage of personal items as uncovered. The city has reached an agreement with the owners of the residence, which is attached to the agenda item, and I'll be seeking signature on tonight. To be clear, this doesn't close out or resolve the portion of the claim that's through the insurance company, and we will continue to work with the residents to resolve any concerns they have that may arise on that front.
You have anything else for us?
Nothing further.
Counsel Committee reports, City Council Committee reports, Riverdale City TPO. I think that's you, Scott.
Doesn't need a motion. I move to approve the proposed settlement agreement.
Second. Oh, is that important? We have a motion, second. Counsel comments or questions?
What is this voting for?
To approve the settlement agreement with the Langs.
Got you. Thank you.
And who was the second? I'm sorry.
Drew gave the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone here care to speak to the item? Back to counsel. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, 5-0. Counsel Committee reports, City Council Committee reports, Riverdale City TPO.
Just a brief comment for you from the last meeting. One of the notations that was made was about projected revenue loss for FDOT. They're looking, anticipating about a 5.7% loss, which equates to about $1.5 billion. However, there's quite a few who believe that number's a little too conservative, that the loss will be much greater. So I think that in the coming months, and I know that this will, some of this will be educated guessing, but in the coming months, I think we're going to be the City Manager's Office and Community Development to maybe try to give us a snapshot in the next, you know, what does this mean for us and some of our projects, our wish list, and things we want to try to do? Because I think this discussion's actually just getting started. There's a lot of speculation, and how are cities going to make up the gaps, and programs, and is this going to change the matching formulas and all those? So, you know, maybe at some point, the City Manager's Office and Tim and Berman over in Community Development can try to put something together for us to give us a little bit of an idea, so as we're forecasting projections of what we want to get done over the next few years, how we get there is definitely going to probably have a little bit of a different look, so we need to get a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about with that. But we'll want to keep an eye on those revenue projections and losses, because there's a lot of people now that are going to be trying to get into a much smaller pool.
You got all that?
We got it.
General Employees Pension Plan?
Meeting was canceled. Next meeting scheduled for October 19.
With that, everybody, have a good night. Thanks for coming.